To the Waterloo City Council, regular city council meeting this evening. Roll call please.
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith.
Here.
Mr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Ms. Wilder.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here. Let's take a moment of silence, please. All right, will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now's the time for public comments. If there's anybody who is wishing to come up and share their thoughts on non-agenda-related items, you will get three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mary Potter, trustee of the Grout Museum, and I want to... Am I on or off?
You're on.
Okay. Today, I want to tell you that on Memorial Day from 11:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m., there is going to be a special honoring of the veterans at the Grout Museum. They're going to be in a parade first, and then they're going to be pulling vets on trailers that are willing to be in the parade. And then they'll open up the grout, and if you want to go, it's suggested that you call first so that they know how many to prepare for. But they're going to have some sandwiches and things for people. Now, in the meantime, some of you really don't have an idea of what Memorial Day was really meant to be. I think when Pastor John talked to, I believe it was our last one or two times ago, he mentioned that Memorial Day is not just a time for hot dogs and a time for, you know, decorating graves and all, but it had a very significant reason that it was put together. I think I told you a couple of weeks ago that the grout earned an American World War II heritage city. And so the grout is very intent about having things that are very much for veterans. Just a minute here, I need to find my paper. The Civil War, which ended in the spring of 1865, claimed more lives than any conflict in U.S. history and required the establishment of the country's first national cemetery. By the late 1860s, Americans in various towns and cities had begun holding springtime tributes to these countless fallen soldiers, decorating their graves with flowers and reciting prayers. Some records show that one of the earliest Memorial Day commemorations was organized by a group of formerly enslaved people in Charleston, South Carolina, less than a month after the Confederacy surrendered in 1865. Nevertheless, in 1966, the federal government declared Waterloo, New York, the official birthplace of the Memorial Day. On the first decoration day, James Garfield made a speech at Arlington National Cemetery, and 5,000 participants decorated the graves of 20,000 Civil War soldiers buried there. Many northern states held similar commemorative events and reprised the tradition in subsequent years. By 1890, each one had made Decoration Day an official state holiday. The name Decoration originally came from the idea of decorating graves, but after that time, it was decided that we're really trying to memorialize those who served in combat, those who died in combat, and so this was the time to remember them. In 1865, just after the war ended, a large procession was held in the ruined city of Charleston, South Carolina. There, thousands of black Americans, many of whom had been enslaved until the city was liberated just a few months earlier, commemorated the lives of Union captives. Is that my three minutes, truly? Well, then, at that point, I'd like to have all of you that are veterans stand, and we'll give you a little applause. Rick Cartado, please, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
I have a handout. I don't know if someone could... Hi, all right. My name is Jenna Peterson. I serve with Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity here in Waterloo, and our address is 803 West Fifth Street. So I'm handing out a little handout. I'm here today representing the Walnut Neighborhood Safety and Trust Action Team. So this action team started last July, and what you have before you is the Quarter Three update on the first page. You can read more about that on your own time, but what I'm going to emphasize is actually on the back of this first page. So it says a pop-up event. So the Walnut Neighbors are seeking to put on this pop-up event. It's going to be called Chalk the Block for a Safer Street. This has already been approved to be a block party, but we just wanted to make sure you all were aware that you're invited to come. It'll be on Sunday, June 9th, and if it's a rain date, it'll be Sunday, June 23rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And yeah, so we are excited for this event because it's going to allow the Walnut Neighbors to express some of their neighborhood pride by putting chalk down on the street, on those intersections that you can see there. The curb bumpouts have been... All of this has been designed by InterCog, as well as they're working with the City of Waterloo Engineering Departments and Traffic Street Departments. So the blue curb bumpout that you see actually won't be utilized. That one has been cut by the team that's working on this, and they're still working on designs for the other, which looks like orange bumpout that you can see there. And so, yeah, that has been a big part of what this team is working on, and we definitely want you to come attend. And in terms of the chalking event becoming maybe more of a more permanent structure with paint in the future, I just wanted to mention that this actually is in alignment with the Waterloo, City of Waterloo 2030 Strategic Plan. Actually, on page 19, I'm just going to read part of it. It says that they're going to develop sidewalk stencils for each neighborhood and develop a distribution and locations plan for heavily trafficked areas for each neighborhood. And then later down, just, I want to mention the piece on equity. It says, "Holding all neighborhoods at the same value helps break down barriers and allows everyone to feel pride where they live and develop a sense of belonging." So that's what this event is going to be all about. And then just to pop back to this handout that I gave you, there's some data here on this page about some studies and research that's been done on chalking and street safety that has to do with these traffic calming strategies using chalk. And the last page has a door hanger that the team has used. So anyway, that's what we have, and it looks like this, so.
Larry Stummey, 1008 Lois Lane, Waterloo. Over a year ago, on May 15th, a prophet, a local prophet by the name of Reverend Dr. Michael Blackwell, appeared before this group, and since then, he has appeared many, many times, almost every session that you have been gathering for the meetings. And he came for the purpose to speak truth to power. And the truth was that Waterloo Cedar Falls has been identified objectively as one of the worst places for blacks to live in the country and to power because you are the power people. It's your city that you're in charge of, and he asked you and he begged you to take the priority that it has. The most important priority for government is to care for the weak and care for the people who are oppressed. And so he has been coming back with that same message. Sadly, the message has not been heard that we know of because he's never... We've been at these meetings for every time, and not once have we had a response from the powers that be. And it's disappointing, but it's still true. You are the key to improving the situation, correcting the terrible amiss that's created this community, be identified objectively as one of the worst places for blacks to live in the country.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, 411 Alma Street. And part of the problem that we have here, and he was just momentarily speaking to me about why blacks on the city council and the mayor hasn't addressed these issues with the 24/7 Wall Street report. And I told him, and he dropped his head, but I want him to understand, just like I want you to understand, and every African-American that serves on any council. The reason we're the worst place in the nation and the reason this is a policeman who sexually assaulted my daughter and it's been covered up by police is because of racism. And the machine is so gangsterish now that they'll put black folks up there and make them the biggest racist against their own people. And you can't call the NAACP to say it's racism. You understand what I'm saying? And I wasn't planning on wasting a minute on that part because it's case 9914612, where a person went in the restroom of my daughter in Urbendale, Iowa. Reason I keep mentioning this is because the cover-up also extended up here to the Waterloo Police Force. Dan Treckel played a major part in it. When he said before, on a MHO 132HH, not HH, 88, that's mental health case, where he said that, and part of it, he also feel law enforcement had a partner sexual assault on his daughter. He never investigated, but I found this to be Charles Tedesco, a Des Moines policeman. So what he put me in the psychiatric setting for is lies. Another lie he told in the psychiatric setting, excuse me, committal paper, was that I was going to every East High basketball game messing with Reverend Funches's son. Reverend Funches is my neighbor, and he writes most of my paperwork for me. His son graduated from West High. He didn't even go to East. So when we say, when it's mentioned, the 24/7 Wall Street report, this is racism and it's being done by black folks now. There's a case that I want to bring to view because I'll be back in the next week. That's an AGCR 128030. The same people, Officer Bram, who said I was dangerous and crazy in the committal paper, got my son for interference causing injury. My son was 19 years old and very green to this, when in fact, they was pulling over Andre Roberts, who they're very familiar with, AKA Yak, my second cousin, and they knew who they were looking for, but Bram and Hesse cornered my son up in the garage, and I'll be back to finish it, and had him by his face, telling him he was Yak, and he was telling me wasn't. That was the beginning, the heaviest part of the beginning, of him living under Stockholm syndrome with our police being a part of it. I'll see you in two weeks, and I'm hoping like him that after coming down here for years, y'all put together a group and be able to tell me you're calling somebody.
Thank you.
Hello. Sorry to hear you're having this stress, Stacy. Stacy's one of my neighbors in the Walnut Neighborhood. I'm Barb Perez. They live at 331 Argyle Street. And I want to thank you all for your great service to the city and hope you're all having a blessed summer. And we have a lot of great agencies here. Now that I've been on this team for the Neighborhood Safety Trust, I've discovered these people are just great. Some are here tonight, and they are so supportive of what we're trying to improve in our neighborhood. And I'm on the Safety Trust team, and we've done multiple surveys, input from the neighbors, and there's been reports of at the Boys and Girls Club Corner and the Walnut Court Corner, Walnut and Third Street, about speeding, unsafe speeding, and stop signs being ignored. And as Jenna spoke, we're trying to work on some solutions with these painting. We would like to see maybe a 25-speed limit slowing traffic, if that's permissible, permissible, and also the painting, if that would slow the people down, and pedestrian cross painting. We have a lot of seniors at the Walnut Court Apartments use canes and walkers, and they reported almost getting hit. Multiple children are left off from the school buses at the Boys and Girls Club, and as we know, that saying, "Prevention is easier than cure." And so whatever the city would deem would work, that would be great. And so thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you.
My name is Beverly Cosby, and I live at 315 Walnut Court. And really, I just have one question, a couple of questions. We all know what's happening up on Logan Avenue. We know that Hy-Vee is closing, and I know some of you feel like it's a done deal. There's nothing that can be done, but I guess I'm just a firm believer, there's always something that can be done. And I want to know why the, our council is not aggressively trying to save that store. There's so many people that are going to be impacted that it's beyond my, beyond my, not my believing, but that you all wouldn't want to save that. There's a million-dollar project going across the street. You've got people coming from Highway 63, Highway 63 North, Highway 63 South. You've got people coming from John Deere's. You've got Unity Point behind it. Why aren't we, can't we be, or why aren't we being more aggressive in trying to do something to save that store? Like I said, it's going to impact a whole lot of people in more ways than one because you're going to lose a pharmacy, you're losing a bank, you're losing a gas station. We're losing all of that, and unless you've got something that can go in there and replace that, then that's going to be a blot on the neighborhood. And we can't afford that because it seems like everything that's closed in the last six months has been on the east or north side. We're losing instead of gaining. So my question to you all is, how come we can't be a little bit more aggressive in trying to do something to save that store and to save that neighborhood?
Hello. My name is Michelle Brooks. I live at 1026 Ash Street. I'm going to piggyback off what this young lady just talked about. I want to know, is there a plan for another store to go in that place that we know of? Because what's happening is, that's going to be a desert for the people that walk there. And I thank God that I don't have to depend on that store, but think about the people that do. Please let us know what's going on. If you know something, let us know, and don't wait until the last minute. And I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Any further comments? Joining a second time, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. I'm Vapredil Sanders. I live at 317 Webster Street. The question I pose is, as you're planning for the city, has there been some analysis that has been done in the past that can be looked at to determine what is causing the stores in this area to close, whether it's a SWAT analysis or any other type of analysis? Because when we invest money in those type of studies, then one of the things we need to do is to monitor progress. And so I'm wondering if there are analyses that have been done, and are we going back or can we go back to those studies and apply it to the situation of especially Hy-Vee and CVS? I am concerned not only about those stores, but that All-In Grocers is another store that I'm concerned will be at risk. And so if we can get a heads up on what has caused the two to leave and whether we can do anything to preserve the future, then maybe that will be a benefit to All-In Grocers. Thank you.
All right, any further comments from citizens? Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Childs.
Thank you. Ward 1, we will be having our ward meeting this Saturday at noon at the same coffee shop on Ridgeway, Sidecar, same place I've been every month. Hope to see you there. I've had a few different people show up each time, so it's always good to get to talk to different citizens. So if you have any questions about things that are going on, please see me there, noon this Saturday, because it's the final Saturday of the month. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask if there was anything that Noel knows person... What's your name? I'm sorry.
Eric.
Eric. Eric could share with the community about Hy-Vee. The one constituent talked about a SWAT analysis, so can you give us some idea of what's going on?
Eric Schrader, city planner. I can review that one with Noel, but I'm not aware of any specific studies or SWAT analysis that has been done. We haven't, at this point, heard of any proposed reuse of the site.
Mr. Mayor, can I finish? Yes. I wanted to also make a comment. I know that, I see that one of the members have left out of the room here, but when we talk about food deserts and areas that are minoritized and marginalized, and when we talk about racism, as Pastor Stummey did and Stacy Roberts, we have to remember that it's a system that's in place. It's a system in operation that continues to reproduce after its kind. So it's not about individuals, it's about a system that we must dismantle. So when we look at what's continuing to happen on the north end, such as with CVS and what happened now with Hy-Vee, then we have to get to the core of the problem and ask some of the pointed questions as to whether or not these kind of businesses are coming in, exploiting our community in a way by taking advantage of tax dollars, and then when it's time for them maybe to pay taxes, I don't know, maybe someone could help me with that, but then they leave. So if that is the case or something like it, I'm new to the board here, right? I think it's important that our constituents know and that this council deals with it so that it never happens again, because otherwise, my vote on Tiff's stuff will be no.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, sir. I have the honor of sitting on the, as a council liaison to Black Hawk Gaming, and our monthly meeting today, we met in the Walnut Neighborhood area to look at, we had Habitat, Auto Shoys, and the gaming board, and to tour that. And the amount of work that's going on in that, I recommend anybody, just to drive through there and see the changes in that neighborhood, the investments that Habitat's making, the investment that Auto Shoys is making, and the investment that the Walnut Neighborhood Association is making. They planted hundreds of trees in that area also. And I just wanted to say just what a nice tour it was, what a great information that we received, and there's a lot of good things happening in the Walnut Neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bozen. Mr. Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to let people know that Tuesday, March 28th, 5:30 p.m., in the Waterloo Public Library Meeting Room A, I'll be having at-large with Rob, my ward, at-large ward meeting. So look forward to seeing people there at that time.
Mr. Nichols, can you repeat that? It was hard to understand the date and time. It's at the Waterloo Public Library. I caught that, but I didn't catch the date and the time.
Yeah. May 28th at 5:30 p.m.
So May 28th, 5:30 p.m.
Yeah.
At the Public Library. Okay, thank you. Council, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Statements, sorry. Yes?
I, first and foremost, as the councilperson for Ward 3, I just want to sincerely apologize to everyone that lives in that area who will be losing out on Hy-Vee and the services that are offered there, but I do just ask that we try to switch the narrative just a little bit, switch the perspective, and lean on the resources that we do have, because just because you don't see us talking about the work or you don't hear us talking about the work, that doesn't mean that work is not being done, because I know that three of us will be meeting with Hy-Vee this week. I know that the mayor has met with everybody that he can at Hy-Vee, so the work is being done. And so I just want you to give us grace and allow things to happen because things are happening, and they will always happen. I grew up on the east side of town. I rode my longboard to Hy-Vee. That was one of my first jobs. My grandfather got the best peaches from Hy-Vee, and so I share the same sentiments that you all do, and so just know that things are happening, even if you don't see it, even if you don't hear it, we are working. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, may I have a motion, please? To close the public comments.
I move to close the public comments.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Our public comments are closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the item, with the amendment on item number 14, and that is a resolution approving requests to certify assessments for unpaid snowwee moving and lot cleanups for payments dated on January 1st, 2023 to March 1st, 2024, and the amount changed from $10,100, $10.03 to $9,859.72 for properties listed on attached Exhibit A, and the reason is to amend the payment amount to $9,859.72 as a payment of $250.31 was approved. And in addition, for items approving the amount for April 22nd, 2024, $3 million, bills payment, $3,951,005.05 for May 13th, $6,127,872.52, and for May 20th, $4,689,802.57.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes, with the exception of number 12.
And how are you voting on number 12?
At this time, I'd like to have more information. So no?
Okay, Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
We have objections. Any of the other ones, can we bring that up at this time, or are we...
If you, at this time, you're either voting yea on all of it or nay, and if you're voting nay, either, it's either all of them or a specific one.
Okay, I'm voting no, an exception to number 21 for a request for more information.
Okay. And Ms. Wilder?
Yes on all of them with an abstention on 13.
Okay. Yeah, we do need a reason for an abstention.
I'm going to do the videography for the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Business.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we have an agenda. There is an appointment... There is an appointment and I may be butchering Indira, is that right? Indira, okay, Indira Kusko? All right, welcome. And you're going to be at our Community Development Department as an intake specialist. So welcome to the city of Waterloo, yay. And then we have Chris Fishels being appointed to the design review board. Chris, are you here this evening? Okay, so welcome, Chris, thank you for that. Can I have somebody take item number one under public hearing, please?
Mr. Mayor. Oh, go ahead.
I need to look something up real quick. This voting.
Do I do it up or down?
Yeah, I need to look at this, the additional information real quick, sorry.
That's okay.
Let's keep going. I'll, if there's something I need to make a notation of, I'll, I'll address it and do it in a minute.
As a reminder, if you need more information on something, then please ask it before the meeting, so that way you can get it and we can vote on it here as best as possible.
Sorry, I don't want to hold up the meeting.
Yep. All right, number one, under public hearing, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bozen.
I would make a motion to approve the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at seven oh eight West Third Street in the amount of two thousand dollars to Truman Allen, including approval of a development agreement and, and real estate contract for the rehabilitation of a garage and construction of a fence. And I apologize, I just also receive and file approval publication of a public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Rob, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Okay, sorry, I just didn't hear you. All right, nays, motion carries. Anybody like to come up and speak about this city-owned property? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bozen.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sorry, yep.
To adopt a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at seven oh eight West Third Street in the amount of two thousand dollars to Truman Allen and authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Childs?
Just to say, I am, I'm very appreciative of this type of, again, we've talked about it before, splitting up lots, making sure things are more effective and efficient and getting more citizens land. So I'm very appreciative of this, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Childs. Any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to doubt the resolution approving the development agreement, real estate contract with Truman Allen for the rehabilitation of a garage and construction of a fence and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes, number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to receive and file approval publication of a public hearing for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five residential lots miscellaneous areas mowing and lot maintenance services contract rebid for city-owned lots generally maintained by the planning and zoning department.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry, public comments. Thanks. I was just reading.
David Dr. thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Every year I see this and it always only gives a per time or per lot mowing, et cetera. Can we get an actual cost of what like last year cost us? Because we own a lot of different properties that we have to mow. But at, at these rates, I don't disagree with the rates, it just, it doesn't give us a total figure of what the public is spending to take care of the stuff that we ought to be getting rid of.
I don't think we're going to be able to come up with that right this second, so we will have somebody email that information to you.
Is a minute okay?
Nope. Thank you, though.
I know that. If somebody get back to me and you guys have my number.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the hearing, receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Motion carries, sorry.
I, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to receive, file, and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Okay, our estimate for option A is eighteen dollars per lot, per occurrence, under one acre. Option B, seventy-five dollars per hour, per occurrence for lots that are larger than an acre. We had one bidder, it was B and B Long Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. For option A, their bid was eleven dollars and forty-one cents. And for option B, their bid amount was forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Thank you, hold on one sec. I should have asked anything before about council questions.
I had a, I had a question, sir.
Mr. Bozen.
And, and one's a statement, maybe, maybe Eric can help with this too. Do you know how many acres three-ten Upland is? Because we just added that to our, our mowing at fifty dollars an acre.
Eric Schrader, city planner, I don't have that number in front of me, but I feel like it was somewhere in the four or five acre range. But I know we did look at that, calculate it, and add it to the list, yes.
And it, and it proves the point of how important it is for us to be marketing. We have over two hundred and forty, two hundred and forty-seven plus six fifty-seven A lots and city-owned lots, correct?
Correct.
And that, that we're paying, and is it, is it, is it twice a month or that we mow them?
The, the contract provides for when it's over a certain height, so during peak mowing season, it's probably four times a month, basically once a week during, once it starts getting off peak, twice a month is more typically what we do.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schrader. Counsel, any further questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
I never moved to award the bid yet.
Oh, you're right. We had, we read the bids and then we had a question. So yes, we need a motion to award the bid.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Nope, I move to adopt a resolution awarding bid to B and B Long Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of eleven dollars and forty-one per lot, per occurrence for lots under one acre, and forty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents per acre, per occurrence for lots, one acre or more, in conjunction with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five residential lot slash miscellaneous area mowing and lot maintenance services contract rebid for the city-owned lots generally maintained by the planning and zoning department.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes, number three, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file approval publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at five sixteen Pine Street in the amount of one dollar to Habitat Heartland for Humanity, of Humanity, including approval of, of a development agreement for the redevelopment of a single-family home and grant of five thousand dollars for infill housing incentive.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, is there any public comments on this item? Going a second time? Let me close the public.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral or written comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries?
All right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion approving the resolution and authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at five sixteen Pine Street in the amount of one dollar to Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Ma'am, sorry.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity for the rehabilitation, what?
No.
Oh, sorry. Of a single-family home at five sixteen Pine Street with a five thousand dollar infill housing grant and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes, number four, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen?
I'd like to make a motion, receive and file approval publication notice of public hearing and request by King Automotive to rezone approximately one point seven six acres from C two commercial district to M one light industrial district for potential expansion of an existing salvage yard located south of two seventy-five Rampart Lane.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion, motion carries? Is there any public comments on the salvage yard expansion? Going a second time?
Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file any oral and written comments.
Mr. Mayor. I need, did have a comment.
Yeah, but it's public comment.
Okay, gotcha. You better close it. But I, okay, gotcha.
Second.
Oral written comments and recommendation of approval of the Planning Program and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries? Mr. Bozen?
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, receive and file and consider pass for the first time in ordinance, amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended city Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four, approving a request by King Automotive to rezone approximately one point seven six acres from C two commercial district to M one light industrial district for the potential expansion of an existing salvage yard located at two seventy-five Rampart Lane.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Council questions?
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.